Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 31st. And first item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Risado?
Here.
Beck? Here. Connolly? Chantet?
Here.
Solfa?
Here.
Whoa?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley? Uwer? Serone?
Here.
And Focasinger?
Here.
I have 11 out of 14.
Okay, thank you. Next is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the recording and broadcast. Item three is, anything to be removed, added, or changed tonight?
No.
And then four would be matters from the public, items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody online? Okay. And then we'll be up to item number five, which is discussion on 300 Deer Path Road uses.
Scott?
Yes, so this was discussed at the last committee meeting. And we provided the council with a copy of the minutes as well as the video from September meeting in 2019, and also a copy of the annexation agreement that relates to the property in question. So we have, you know, there was discussion at the meeting on the September meeting. We also had some conversation with the city attorney, and I believe Ed Bola is representing Trendle's office tonight, and he can talk about anything relating to guarantees of things beyond the scope of the annexation agreement. But based on my general discussion with the city attorney, you know, there's really outside the scope of an annexation agreement, there's no real way to guarantee something like that for future city council, that something is or is not allowed. I would note that upon review of the zoning code, essentially agriculture uses, because of the size of this property, agricultural uses are allowed under the current zoning code. So, you know, that is an allowable use for agriculture, for animals, for farming, that type of thing is allowed. The only thing that really isn't covered in any of that is the burning issue, and that's more of a municipal code issue than it is a zoning code. That's not something that's regulated by zoning. So that's kind of where we are with things at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm Wayne Shilka. My wife and I own the property that we're discussing. So I'm just wanting to make sure, am I clear that you're saying that what we requested is not something that you're going to be able to grant?
Legally not. We would not be able to say that forever we could give you what was in there.
So in the meeting notes during the annexation meeting, the question was, how will we, and I don't remember the exact wording, how will we be able to assure that the allowance will be available beyond 20 years? Available, right? Not, can be requested.
It can be requested.
But it will be available, not requested. And I guess another thing is, a person can always request something. Why then would it need to be written into any agreement? They can always do that. It was clear that, at least in our opinion, maybe not yours yet, but it's clear to us that the reason for that was that, at the end of the 20 years, because what I think Scott had said is, you can only write it for 20 years. If you could have written it for longer, you would have. I'm maybe putting words in somebody's mouth, but the point was, we're writing it for as long as we can, because we can't go beyond 20 years. So, and then it was the fact that they could request it to continue because it would be available, they could do that. They could choose not to for whatever reason.
Correct.
But they could, because it would be available to them, they could request that what is available continue to...
Right, and that's what's written in the agreement.
We want to, we need to have the assurance that it will be granted, that the word available means that it will be granted.
That's not a guarantee. There's no way we can make that claim. And that was not what was written in the agreement, nor in the meeting, that it was a guarantee.
Yeah, and...
What was guaranteed to you was is that that process is available at any point beyond 20 years.
Yeah, not that the process was available, but the granting of it was going to happen. The continuation was available, because that was the question that Mr. O'Brien asked. How will the next owner know that it's available to them? Not that they can request it, because again, anybody can request anything, so...
Well, Scott, did you send a copy of what you sent us to them, to the owners?
Yeah, I sent the minutes as well as the video, and then the annexation agreement they have a copy of, because that was part of the documentation.
Because what I'm saying was the email that you sent to the city council, that really, to me, that showed that even if the rules were to change in that period, that would be allowed to continue as non-conforming, correct?
Yes, correct, yes. So the zoning uses, agricultural uses, even if we decide to change the R0 district, because the property's owned by R0, if we decided to change the zoning district, or what's allowed in that zoning district later on, and they're still doing things that are allowed in that R0 and/or allowed under the annexation rate, they could continue as a non-conforming use. So that would be allowable. But I think what they're asking for is to have it guaranteed as a forever use, even if the property owners cease the use, that they would then be able to continue that use later on.
It is what we need to have. I mean, it's what we have. We bought the property...
Well, you have it for 20 years.
I understand. We bought the property, though, not ever expecting that we were going to be annexed by the city, right? You chose to do that to standardize addresses, is what we were told, for the fire and police work that might be needed by us. Understand that.
Yeah, and I think one of the things, and maybe Ed can, you know, chime in on this, but the, you know, there's no guarantee of zoning. You know, the county could have changed the zoning at any time. I mean, they could have said, you know, "We're not going to allow agriculture uses for properties that are under 10 acres," or something like that. So they could do that at any time if they wished to do so.
Sure.
Under current county zoning, so I mean, the same thing happens with the city zoning.
Yeah, and Scott, we understand that, that when we bought the house, understanding how it was zoned, we understand how the county could change that, and we would then have to fight it, right? We understand that. What we're looking for is to have the assurance for the people that we are going to sell the house to, that if they own it beyond the length of this agreement, or want to sell it to somebody else, that they are able to have what we bought the house, having the freedoms that we had, and the ordinances, the requirements, the rules. I'm not an attorney, Chris, but whatever the wording needs to be. We were living under certain conditions that we understood when we bought the house. You then chose to annex us. We asked that that continue for us, and that it can be able to be available for anybody in the future. And you said that it was going to be available.
Right, and it is available.
We need to have the understanding that available then means, if they request it, it will be granted.
I can't guarantee you that. I don't know who's going to be sitting here at the end of that 20 years.
And that's why we need it, because we don't know, because we have no idea who, I mean, we hired, we hired our neighbors...
There may be state law that preempts that. I can't tell you that, what's going to happen in 20 years with that.
It's a law you're telling me now that you can't do it?
No, the law is, we can write it for a 20-year time period.
Sure.
At the end of that, you can ask for whatever you want on that property, and then it's determined by the city council, the sitting city council at that time, what will be given to you.
And that's not the way we understood the agreement when we annexed, allowed you to annex.
I think it was pretty clear during that earlier meeting that we said that it was a 20-year timeframe, and that it would be available to be redone at that point, that the availability would be there.
Maybe, I don't know the legal definition of available, but that they could request it is one thing. That it was available for them, to them. Available means that it's there. You can have it, right? So available would mean to me that if they wanted it, and I don't know why they wouldn't, maybe they wouldn't, but if they wanted it, it was available for them to have continue.
It's available, available, it is available, but doesn't mean you can have it.
Well, then, I'm not understanding the word of availability. If it's sitting there, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
It means it's available to apply for, okay? So you can do the same, the owners, whoever owns the property, might not even be the people you're selling to now, whoever owns the property at the expiration of the 20-year timeframe, have available to them the same process that you undertook when it was first presented.
Okay, yeah.
So they have the availability of the process. They're not a guarantee of the results of the process.
Sure. So if something is available, and again, I'm going for, you know, what we would understand, what I would understand to be available during my normal day, if something is available, it's there for me if I choose to have it, right?
The process is available. It's not the result, it's the process. So that's a totally different thing, you gotta...
Let me throw out an example. You know, we don't, in Batavia, we do not restrict the types of variances that somebody can request generally, but there are certain communities that do. So let's say they say you can only request a variance of up to X percent of a setback. So, you know, if you want to go beyond that, that is not available to you as a variance that would be something you could ask for. We don't do that here in Batavia, but that would be an example of where there is not an availability of some kind of relief from the zoning code.
So, Chris, are you saying that it was available to somebody to request something? That's what you're saying? That was, and that's what I'm saying, that's always available to them. Why would that need to be then something that was written into this agreement? Because anybody always can request something.
It is...
That's available.
That was what Scott was trying to explain, was if there was, you were applying for a permit, and there are certain variances that are allowed to be requested, they're not guaranteed to be approved, but you may be permitted to follow the process to seek that type of variance, but there are other variances which are not available. You wouldn't even be able to apply for those variances. So the available is the process to request it.
Okay, so then, we don't want to take too much of your time, because this doesn't seem to be going anywhere today. Are you saying, then, there's nothing you can do?
Well, I don't know that there's anything that anybody could do with this.
Is there not, are we not going to be able to get what we want from you?
If you're asking for a guarantee that that would be approved at that point, at the end of the term, no, we can't do that.
Okay.
What we can tell you is, they can apply for that, and if they don't apply for it, the zoning that would be on there, if it's the same as it is today, and it's different, or if it's different and would be non-conforming at that point, it can continue as non-conforming on the property. So if they wanted to burn, they'd have to abide by the rules that are allowed in Batavia to burn, and that's what would be allowed, or what was granted on that property when the annexation agreement was written. And any other thing that was allowed on the property at that time would be non-conforming.
Sure, and we would understand that, if they chose not to apply for it. That's why we need to be able to make sure that anybody who buys it understands what they would need to be doing at a certain time period, right?
Right.
And that's what we're trying to give them, is the assurance that, because they want to buy the house, they want to know that if they apply for what's available, they will get it.
I can understand that.
You can understand that, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, and probably other homeowners understand that, too. But if you're telling me now that there's nothing you can do, you're not going to be able to get us, give us what we're looking for? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I do not think that that is available.
Okay.
As far as our legal, you know, reality of that, and what our advice is from our legal...
I understand.
Counselor says that that's just something we can't do.
Okay, yeah. And what's happened before to us, when you were buying our property, you offered a certain amount of money, because you bought a strip of land, right, of ours, to put a bike path in, because you needed that in order to get the funding you needed to fix a bridge, is what we understood, because we asked, why do you need to do that? You offered us a certain amount of money, and you ended up giving us more because we fought with you, right? So that's what I'm asking is, you know, it's like asking mom, and she says no, and you ask dad, and they say yes. Or at work, if you ask a purchasing agent, can you get something done, or a customer service agent, can you do something for us, and they say no, and you talk to the owner, and it's able to get done. I'm just wanting to make sure, before we have to get an attorney, that you're, because you guys don't want us to have to pay money.
Right, and I don't think that an attorney is going to help you in any way, shape, or form to get what you think you want for that, because I don't think it's possible.
I can hear you saying you don't, that's your opinion. So you're saying that it can't get done, so I'd like to have this issue continue so that we can speak with an attorney, okay? I don't know exactly when that will be, but if you can put it on the agenda, maybe for... Four weeks from today, if you meet every Tuesday.
Well, I'd say right now, if it's going to be legal, I don't think we're going to sit here and debate it on the floor of the city council, whether it's at a council meeting or at a council meeting. I think if it's going to be legal, it's going to be between your lawyer and our lawyer. It won't be done here, microphone to microphone.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you realize that we're not saying, okay, we're done.
Right.
I totally understand that.
Yeah, okay.
And also, I've offered to talk to the buyer and/or their attorney that, you know, is looking to purchase the property and see if we can, you know, address whatever concerns they have, so, you know, I'm still willing to talk to them about that, if you're willing to give me that information.
We understand that, Scott, and we appreciate that offer. What they're looking for is to have the same conditions that we have assured, because they've looked at our, they've looked at the annexation, they've looked at notes, and their point is, if it's not in the annexation agreement, it doesn't exist, right? So that's what they're looking for. And that's what we thought we had, you know, if shame on us for not having an attorney represent us at the time, could be.
And if you want to get my email address after, and you can give that to your attorney, that'd be perfectly fine with that.
Your Batavia's attorney?
Uh, we are, yeah.
Okay, great. And what's your name?
Attorney Edward Bola.
Rapola?
Bola.
Bola.
Yeah.
Nice meeting you.
You, too.
Okay, so then, I guess we're done.
I don't know what else we could do at this point.
I understand. We'll find out if there is anything. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
You know, something else I want to say, because we've been residents, and if you give me the moment, we've been residents of Batavia for, I don't know, 20 years? 20 years. We're homeschooling parents, we raised our kids here, paid taxes, and didn't get any school out of it. In fact, the one time we went to use the high school for something, my daughter was a really good swimmer, right? And so she was in 11th grade, there were three girls who went to the high school that, oddly enough, swam different strokes, and my daughter swam a fourth, that if they had been allowed to compete together, they would have come in the top three in the state, no problem. Because we, you know, we club swam, we won the state championships and what have you. So we first went to the high school's AD, who we had been told, and I don't know this, did not view swimming as a sport, right? He was a football guy, or was at the time, I don't know who the AD now. Then we went to the principal, the principal, who was kind of a lame duck, and they said, "Ah, go to the school board," or however. We ended up going and going and going, saying, "All we're looking to do is have you allow our homeschooling 11th grader to compete with these other three girls," because they asked, "Hey, will Catherine swim with us?" Right? And your school board, because you're supposed to allow homeschoolers to do stuff, it's either be a part-time student or have your curriculum approved, we would have welcomed you to see our curriculum, it was pretty aggressive. Geneva allows, Aurora allows, West Chicago allows, and you guys said, "No, you have to be a part-time student." So my daughter and those three, at the time, that would have been, like, 2008, huh? 2008, 2009, whoever the school board was at the time, but that's what ended up happening. And that's a time when all those girls, my daughter included, are trying to get the attention of colleges to get scholarships, and that was not allowed to happen. It just, it's like one thing after another that just keeps beating us up with the government here. And we know that you're not doing it on purpose, we don't think, but you are, you know, taking our property, annexing our property, not allowing us to, you know, take advantage of the school district as maybe we could. So just something that we want you guys to be aware of, that I think other parents in the community would agree. Thanks again for your time.
Nick has his hand raised?
Alan?
Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak up. I am very empathetic for them, and I went back, at the last meeting when this was brought up, I asked for the continuance, because I wanted to review and see what we promised. I read everything and listened to it, and it was, it was pretty clear that, you know, 20 years was it, and that we had long discussion. Alderman, you were particularly kept saying, "Hey, make sure it's in writing that they can apply then, you know, we don't want the time limit to surpass without them knowing that they can apply for it." So it was pretty clear at the time, and I feel bad in that, you know, they're not getting what they want, but, you know, we're, it wasn't for a lack of listening, and if I had the authority or thought we had promised something else, I would be, you know, pounding the desk and fighting, but this is out of our hands, and I thought we were pretty clear three years ago. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to item number six, which is an update on the Hone Creek detention. Andrea's here to talk to us about that.
Hello? Hello. I guess you guys missed me and asked for an update on the detention basin, so...
Andrea!
I put together a little presentation, Laura, can you...
Stop sharing so that you can share? I'd love to.
I just wanted to brag, because it looks so good out there.
Yeah, I've had a couple people actually tell me that, you know, what they saw come down, they were nervous because everything just got clear-cut and cleaned out and done, but now that it's pretty much back up, it's pretty nice looking.
I worked with somebody, and her husband was landscaping, and they drove past it, and they said it was amazing.
Oh, do I need to share something? Be sure to share your screen so that they can see online. Yeah, great. The green button.
Oh, there we go. I'll also say, today we drove by it, and my 14-year-old thought it was a tree farm. It did look pretty amazing today. She was on her friend, she's like, "Yeah, I think that's a new tree farm." And if it give it a few years, then it will look that way. So, as I said, I'm here to kind of give an update on the detention basin and where we're at. This is the existing, or I will say, before conditions, both east and west side of the road. You can see on the west side, the city-owned property, the creek used to run just directly west, Hard 90 and another Hard 90, with its storm sump pump drainage running from the south. And then we had an existing detention pond from the Rose Hollow subdivision to the far north. With our design, we have incorporated that detention basin further south, and able to create a stockpile up at that north end, which also helps those residents with eyesight and view of Kirk Road. So we have a drone, and this was some... So we have a drone, and this was some footage that Daniel, who's our licensed pilot, can, went out there and got. And the project started from about this location here, and these were all the existing foliage, I will call it. I don't know that they were all really great trees, most of them were not, but they gave the appearance of trees and some shade. And you can see the existing outfall here from the Fermi side. Oops, I'm just going to pan through here. Sorry, I did not know how to edit this type of footage. But our construction entrance is right over here where the city vehicle was, and that's how we are accessing the site and still are. Again, you can just see all the foliage from before going up to the north end, and here is the detention basin, and then the Rose Hollow subdivision with these bright green This is on April 1st. We had a little bit of delay with Army Corps permit, and so that delayed us a little bit. But this is a nice, bright day, probably one of the few we had, facing east with the trees. And then I like to take a little video because there were some residents. Friday, April 1st, 2022, 2:30 PM. And that's looking to the south. And looking to the north, just kind of what their view was at the time with no foliage. And then again, here's some regular pictures are, just looking north and south along the property lines and what the residents were accustomed to seeing. If any of you did not see the tree removal, this machine was amazing. Like, I mean, it's not fun to cut down trees all the time, but Jennifer came out and witnessed this with me, and this thing was. And it just takes the tree, and this is what it was doing for days. And then creating the whole pile, and then. So that was April 13th, Friday the 13th. This were some pictures of the tree removal, and I did hear about this right away. We did extend our limits on the south side, so we had some room for the machine to mobilize and get around. Then this picture on the left is just kind of a funny picture. I was walking and double-checking some trees to the north, and we saw this tail hanging out. And the guy was like, do I really have to go near that tree and cut it? Because God knows what was in there. I never did follow up with him, but it was just very interesting. I'm like, I am not going anywhere near that to witness that. This video on the right is just showing some earthwork with all the tractors out there moving. And then we had the haul road going to the north to create that spoil pile, and they were digging out the little detention area over there. These pictures showed the basin starting to take shape, as well as then on the right side, that is the outfall. We before did not have a restricted, a restricted outflow from the water that fell off of Kirk Road. It just came free will through there. So this now is a 24-inch pipe, flared end sections on both sides, and it will detain the water up in the basin that we're creating. On May 5th, we had the sanitary bypass and some work on the sanitary that went through here. We had a manhole kind of in the middle of the basin, and we just removed that and connected it from existing structures, and were able to lower it a little as well. And the pump ran, I think, for two days out there as a bypass to get that through there, and that was all Fermi runoff. This was May 9th. You can see, again, more taking shape. The berm to the north is getting larger, and you see the haul road. And then on the south side, you can see that the berm has been built that is adjacent to the residence, as well as the water that is coming from the sump pumps through there. On May 12th, they were working on the tributary with this project. We did the first home, I guess, on the far end of the project, so both the north and south side of the tributary, to show residents and kind of display what could happen. So that is them getting in there and kind of clearing some trees and doing some grading. The picture on the right shows that channel is now wide open, cleared of all the brush, and our electric division went and relocated two power poles, and all the utilities moved off of that because they were in the middle of the stream before. May 16th, completely taking shape. You can see the stoned riprap from our storm outfall up there, and then they had the meandering stream through here. The walls are all, the basin walls, and the height of the berm is completely visible by all residents. And then to the north, they're still working on getting that stockpile and finishing some of the grading around there. But you can see the toe slope from Kirk Road, the outfall as well, where that water will sit and detain and let sediment fall out as well. Again, just another view looking to the north, seeing that we have the overflow we are here, which is stoned riprap, big chunks, a little dangerous. You have to be careful so you don't twist an ankle in there if you're walking across it. And then the same thing, we have that big stone lined the creek to stabilize those side slopes, and then it's matted. And I was out there earlier today, the grass is already starting to pop up in that area, so it's taking shape. And the resident that was on the south side of this said, it looks amazing. Thank you so much for giving me a kickstart to get my yard going. He was a little apprehensive at first, but he said it looks great. And this was when I was out there on May 19th, going with V3 to stake out the locations and double-check some of the locations for the trees. You can kind of see there's a stake here, here, and these are the locations of all the trees. And then we had not yet laid out the arbor viety, but this was sitting, or I was standing on top of that stockpile. And again, concerns from residents, so I took a video just kind of showing how high up I was. And these people in this white house here and the properties to the north of them, I don't think they're going to be seeing any of Kirk Road from their vantage point, which is, you know, pretty amazing, considering what they had as far as their view before. And then this is the final look of what it's supposed to look like. Again, our side, we are nearing completion. We had a pre-con today for the east side with KDOT and Fermi, and as soon as we get inspections and everything lined up with Julie locates, hopefully next week, we'll start getting in there to put up the silt fence, and they want to be in and out in June with all the plantings. So today was Tree Day, and then they will be doing the trees as well, or the native vegetation and plugs and such, hydro mulch and that in the coming weeks. But again, this is the drone, just kind of showing from that same viewpoint what the site looks like now, flying it overhead. A complete transformation, and I'm sure it was pretty scary at first for those residents, but I do hope that they come to enjoy it. You can see the stakes are all out there where the arbor viety will be planted. We did add an additional 31 arbor viety. We, if you recall, when we presented this proposal and the contract, we had an alternate line item for a fence, and we decided there'd be a long-term maintenance and be better to put in more trees, so we have done that. This right here is an arched way for proposed future cul-de-sac bulb, if and when funding allows. But we wanted to plan for that. And here's the tributary, really nice and clean. And then you could see the outfall from the detention pond over there. And right now, they are still, you'll see that there is the pump over here, they are still pumping a little bit from the outfall. There are silt logs and sediment bags out there as part of our Army Corps permit to make sure that we are getting all that silt out and not transferring it downstream. And then all the trees being delivered. And I guess I probably could have. Those are all the arbor viety that we have. That's what they look like. I took a picture, and I was able to stand without heels on, and still they were taller than me. I did not include that one in here, though. But hopefully, they will be done with this shortly, and there's still more to come. Like I said, they're going to finish all the native seeding and plug planting, and then the east side, as soon as we get some of those Julie locates and every, all the inspections completed, will be full steam ahead on the west, or the east side. And that is it. You can keep on following up some updates on the website and drive by. Looks amazing, if you haven't seen it.
I like the fact that we got to use the drone for it. I think that's neat. I'm sure, I'm sure that they can save the path that they ran the drone on and just go back and rerun that same pattern again. That way, they can show what it looks like in a year or two after it's thrown in to see what that looks like.
Yeah.
Planted out and grown in. Anybody have any questions?
Yep. Have we found that our friends at Fermi Lab are very cooperative at this point with you on the east side of the street?
Yes, we have all the paperwork that we need, and we're able to move forward. It was, we had some issues with some easement language and verifying that we are both on the same page, but that's all good to go. And we have our KDOT permit, so we are ready to move forward with that.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to have some conversations with some of the folks in the high-rise about it at the same time when you were trying to negotiate this. And I think there was some minor misunderstandings, and it was from some of the folks closer to the ground and some of the folks that really could make the decision. So I was led to believe that everything would be worked out and you guys could do what you wanted to do. So it sounds like that was the final outcome of what happened.
Yes. Yes, it was. We are looking forward to it.
No reason not. That was, if they aren't going to do anything else with that property, others dump water on it, so they might as well let us do what we need to do there to do it right.
Yeah, and it'll be a great, it's a great investment for all those property owners downstream from right there at that structure all the way down to the Fox River. It will help the erosion and keep out some of that sediment that goes through there and not have it as flashy. That's all I have.
Alan, I just wanted to give kudos to Andrea and the rest of our engineering team for their efforts on this really important project to assist with one of the areas in our city that has historically had some severe flooding issues. They have demonstrated a willingness to work with all the residents in that area, meeting after meeting. There's, this is one part of suggestions for improvements that can be made along the entire pathway of this through the neighborhood. It's been a really nice example of a cooperative process with the residents to come up with feasible solutions to try to assist them with, you know, flooding is just a terrible thing for our residents to have to deal with. So thanks, Andrea, for this update and all your work on the project.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is ordinance 2227, amending the official zoning map to modify a planned development overlay, District Bell Tire, 1980 McKee Street, and write architects applicant. And Ms. Drew here?
Yes.
Drew, this is yours, correct?
I have it from Alheim.
Okay. In a second.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sorry about that, Drew.
Okay, just no problem, sorry. So yeah, tonight's item is for a plan development amendment for the Avenue Motors, or Avenue Marketplace subdivision. If you recall, in 2019, we did approve a plan development with the Raisin Keynes initial development that was then subsequently updated with ordinance 2145, which established some zoning modifications for the properties, but nothing specific to the property that now Bell Tire is looking at, which is Lot A of that subdivision. So the modifications are a mix of basically addressing some modifications that were previously granted, but not specifically for this property, explaining what those are. And then the other aspects are basically granting some other modifications that have been requested through the course of the review of this property. As I noted in the memo, Bell is looking to put 44 parking spaces on the property, whereas the zoning code requires 45. They are proposing to place two parking places on the Chipotle site. But basically, for that, either zoning relief through this plan development needs to be granted, or the applicant would need to provide a parking easement for that site to memorialize that. As I noted in the memo, there's several modifications to the zoning code. Two of them are modifications to perimeter landscape areas. Essentially, that's on the north, south side, to basically give the site a little bit more room for vehicle maneuvering. Basically, the 10 bays for the use will be, or for the automotive use are on the south end of the building, and they do need a bit larger of an area to maneuver vehicles in and out of that space. Additionally, there's a building setback requested to go to 15 feet along the north side rather than 20 required. And then also, there's a request to allow a larger driveway on the site that basically is to allow for some of the larger delivery trucks to access the property. There is also, as I noted in the memo, a request for modification to allow a flagpole to be at the height of the maximum building height in the district, rather than the 35-foot maximum that the zoning code would otherwise require. So the Plan Commission did review this at their May 18th meeting. They did run through the site with the applicant. The applicant did note that there is no use of outdoor storage or display during their presentation. All vehicle work is conducted in the building. They did outline the hours of operation for the site for the commission, and there was a discussion about sidewalks. Basically, the two sidewalks that run on the east and west side of this property would be extended with this project. And then those are the sidewalks that are currently being installed with the current work on the subdivision. So the, as I kind of outlined, the applicant did explain some of the reasons for the need for that larger driveway width, and both those, like I said, are mostly directly related to that, the larger delivery vehicles, as well as some of the design issues need to the site. The commission did discuss landscaping and whether there would be any effect on residential to the east. It was noted that essentially there is more of the detention area along this property. And so there really is not only the landscaping provided on this property, but then the additional common landscaping on the other sites. So the Plan Commission was supportive of the request, and they did vote five to zero for approving designer reviews, subject to the ordinance being, for you tonight, being approved. And they also recommended a vote of five to zero to recommend the proposed plan development modifications that are outlined in the ordinance for each night. So staff does recommend ordinance 2227 being approved as presented.
Okay, does anybody have any comments? Any questions? It's pretty straightforward, pretty simple building and layout on the property. No drive-through to upset people when they can't turn big trucks through them. Yeah?
Yes, I just want clarification about the flagpole. Is it for the American flag or for their own flag?
Sure. So the plans just indicate the American flag on the flagpole. But other, you know, with a flagpole, other flags could certainly be included on that, on that pole.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did look that up to see on any of the other shops that they have built, they're all American flags on them. I don't know that they've asked for it anywhere, but everyone that I could find online was all American flags. Abby? You hear me, Abby? You got your hand raised?
I do, thank you. I wanted to say I still support removing parking minimums for the. the general commercial zone. I don't want to spend any more time or paper arguing 44 or 45 parking spots. It just seems silly. And then also that this is the third or fourth time, I think, that we've granted a variance for reducing the landscaping in lieu of impervious surface, either parking or driveways, which I know that when we're doing them, kind of a one-off, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but three or four times later, this is becoming a trend. And I'm certainly not saying that our landscaping standards are too strict, because I do not believe that to be the case. But I am worried that we are setting ourselves back when stormwater management and frequent flooding becomes more of an issue. We are going to have a bigger hurdle to overcome as we continue to do this.
Yeah, I'll agree with you. I don't know if, you know, we just said, okay, you can put whatever parking you want on there. You don't have to add the extra two spaces, give us three more trees. I'd be okay with that, especially in that area where all the parking lots connect.
And I think this will be a bigger discussion in the near future, but, you know, I think looking at impervious to pervious surface to, if we want to do it by tree count, I don't know if that'll be as effective as saying, no, we have these landscape standards for a reason. And what we require is for practical uses. This isn't necessarily just aesthetic or taste level decisions here. I think we need to be better about standing by those standards.
Drew?
Sure, I just wanted to follow up. So the, the one thing I wanted to add was that we did, or that the plan development ordinance did for the overall development did establish slightly reduced setbacks. Again, I think in one instance, it's a five-foot reduction from our 20-foot standard. So it was this, while it is a modification, it is something that we have basically previously approved for this subdivision. It's just more defining it for this particular lot, because it was not previously defined.
Okay, anybody else? If not, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 2227, amending the official zoning map to modify a planned development overlay district for Bell Tire, 1980 McKee Street, and write architects applicant.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer? Serum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
Okay, thank you. Do we want that on regular agenda or? Put that on consent. Just put it on regulars on agenda, because it's a new business going out there on Randall. That's fine. Okay, up next would be Resolution 2261R, authorizing execution of contract with SKC Construction for the 2022 crack fill program. Alderman Rosado?
Yes. Resolution 2261R and 22062R go hand in hand. This project is done yearly and includes crack filling of city streets and some city-owned parking lots. Map of the streets and the parking lots included are in the contract. We have budgeted $225,000 this year, which 200,000 will come from the street maintenance MFT fund. We received two bids, and SKC Construction was the low bidder at 213,283. So engineer's estimate was 219,000, and staff is also recommending that we allow a contingency amount of 5% overbid instead of standard 10%.
Andrea?
Well, I think you covered it. That's pretty much it. SKC has done the program for us for the last couple of years, and we are satisfied with their work. And weather permitting, we'd like to start ASAP. Otherwise, it'll be held off until the fall, when the temperatures cool down, just because we have that tackiness. And so it just depends on what Mother Nature will provide. So that is it. I can answer any questions, I guess, yeah?
And yes, I am available to remove it from your tires if you park your car on top of it for a day and then come back and it has big giant lumps on your car.
Every day for a month.
Yeah, or every day for a month.
Lucky it's supposed to be cooler.
I know.
I'm like, start tomorrow.
Anybody online? Then I would recommend we move to City Council Resolution 22061R.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Miller. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Beck? Is she still on?
I think we lost her.
Oh, we did. Okay, thank you. Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay absent, Uwer absent, Serum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Ann Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to zero.
Okay, up next then is item nine, Resolution 2262R, authorizing execution of IDOT resolution to appropriate $200,000 from the motor fuel tax. Alderman Rosado?
Yes, this is just authorized payment on a MFT fund. Andrea, you have anything to add to that? That's, yeah. Okay, any discussion or anything? Okay. I'll make a motion that we move to City Council Resolution 2262R, authorizing execution of IDOT resolution to appropriate $200,000 from the motor vehicle fuel tax fund.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Miller. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay absent, Uwer absent, Serum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Ann Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next is item number 10, which is Resolution 2259R, approving modifications to cemetery charges. Alderman Rosado?
Yes, the city has updated charges for the columbarium for 2022. The fees are attached as exhibit one, and the updated fees from a nicatologist, $40 to $50 increase for resident versus non-resident. Gary?
Thank you, Alderman. I did want to point out, our street superintendent, Bill Callum, is in attendance tonight. So for the next two items related to the cemetery, if anyone has any questions regarding cemetery-related items, Bill is definitely the expert on those items. His first resolution is actually to modify cemetery charges. We were before you a year ago to update our charges for all items except the columbarium, because at that time, the columbarium had not yet been constructed. Since that time, obviously, we've completed construction. And in your packet tonight, Bill Callum has put together various examples of how the, well, first of all, on the first picture is a sketch showing how the exterior, if I could open my page, sorry, showing how the exterior of the columbarium can be engraved for various niches, as well as the second row there, which is more of a community location. But then he gave detailed examples in the next several pages of the various options. And so I will finally go back to the actual resolution and then exhibit one to the resolution. And I'll just point out that the first page of exhibit one of the resolution, there are no changes. Those were the changes you made last year. The next page deals with the columbarium, so that's all new information. That is, those are, again, things that did not exist when we, when we did the changes last year, because the columbarium wasn't in existence. The third page, there's no changes. Bill did notice on the fourth page, there's a category Sunday and city holidays after 12 o'clock PM. So that category is new, but it's consistent with the pricing for the rest of the categories there. And then on the last page, it says other cemetery services, specifically columbarium engraving, again, a new section. So those are the new areas within the cemetery charges, and we are recommending approval of 22059 for those charges.
Any discussion?
Gary, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. When you're the mayor, the things in town have a tendency to kind of move around, and people ask you questions about different stuff. And I would tell you, probably the last six weeks, the columbarium has gotten a lot of attention from people in Batavia who are down there looking at it and trying to figure out how this whole thing works. And I'm glad you were able to bring this photo tonight that'll show it, because that was the question, well, is there going to be any way that anybody's going to be able to know that we're buried inside there? Because right now, it's just a blank wall.
Just a blank granite right now, yes, yeah.
And so this thing, I think my instincts are, is we're going to be adding to this pretty quickly. I mean, I don't know how many of these we've sold, but I've had a number of people ask about it and say that they're very interested in getting themselves a place in this thing.
I can let Bill comment on the trends, but I think we see the same thing.
Yeah, we're actually, we are getting the same requests, and that's why the big push, we wanted to get it complete, so they would see exactly what they're purchasing. And then, like you said, Mayor, this photo and pose of the engravings helps give them a better visual of what to expect. We do offer quite a few options. Some cemeteries only give you one option when it comes to a layout. We have five different options for a layout at the same cost, unless they want to put an extra line of endearment at the bottom, then that's so many, so much per letter. But that is an extra option for them. And then you've got the community space or the ossuary there in that second row. And that's, that's a great option for the cemetery, for those who want to have a permanent memorial, but they can't afford a niche, or they can't afford a grave space, and lack of scattering, and not having that permanent spot. Here, you can, you know, have the burial there in the columbarium and have a permanent spot. And it's the most economic cost of offering in the entire cemetery.
A couple of questions I've been asked. One is, do we allow for the mixing of ashes in these?
That is what the community space is, but it's not, it is a co-mingled space, but they're actually put in a very, really nice respectful felt bag, and then that is tied up, the cremation bag that comes from the crematory goes inside the felt bag, and then that gets put inside the community space.
When you say community, that's anybody that can be thrown in there?
Yes, that is, it's a co-mingled space in the center, but there are private niches all the way around.
Right. Because, you know, when I'm the mayor, when you're the mayor, you get these interesting questions. And two weeks ago, I was someplace in this town, I won't say where, and I was in a public forum, and this girl I have known most of my life comes up to me with tears in her eyes, and she says to me, I want to know, as the mayor, do you have any control over that columbarium thing you're putting down there? And I said, well, what's the issue? And she says, well, you know, my mother died five years ago. She was cremated. We've kept the ashes in the house, and now we're going to buy a space in this to her. And so my father tells me that he's, he's going to buy one, I guess be right next to the wife, but then the father's got a new person in his life, and he's telling his daughter, he's going to buy one for the second woman next to him on the other side of him. And that is not going, I don't, I don't, I don't need to get into it, but that sounds like it's not going over too good. So, you know, you just never know what you're going to get into in this stuff, as far as people getting all excited about.
Say, we need, we don't need to be anywhere near that decision.
Right. I said, that's what I told him. I told her, I said, you know, I don't think the city council's going to really want to get involved in this conversation. You, you as a family need to work it out, and if your dad comes in and buys these, he owns them, and I guess he can do what he wants with them, you know, so. So I'm just sharing that with all of you, because I think, knowing this person, some of the rest of you may get, you know, some of you maybe own a store in town or something, and come in and tell you what they think about this going on, so.
I'm actually not surprised by that scenario. We actually do have over, not just recently, but over the last 30 years, we've had some really unique requests.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I've been involved with some of mine, because it ends up with me, but, I mean, this one, I could see this is, I really see this taken off. I mean, I think you'll have three or four of these down there before.
And that appears to be the trend, as Gary alluded to. In most cemeteries, they'll start off with a centerpiece, like what we did here. And the plan is, we can add, it was put there on purpose, so that we can add rectangular columbarium surrounding it on the outside of those, of the sidewalk that was installed. And that's something where, you know, we haven't built it in a corner. It's there, so we can build upon it. If it does catch on in Batavia, it does give us a lot of opportunities, putting more spaces in there.
I've had a funeral director, not from Batavia, but another one in the area, tell me that they're the opinion that over 60% of the burials now are all being cremation.
Yeah. And that's the thing, Batavia, we had certain areas within our existing grounds that we had specified just for cremation burials. And those were selling up so fast, faster than what we could even plot them on a map. And this will give better options. There are a lot of people that come to us, they want to be buried in cemetery, but they have issues whether phobia is being buried underground, they want to be above ground. And that's the reason for us changing our code as well this evening. Our code didn't allow that previously, and now it opens that up to allow us to have above-ground burials in a columbarium.
I had the opportunity to talk with an undertaker who I'll keep unnamed, who told me that in the month of January, there were 48 funerals. Many of them were not full-sized funerals, but he dealt with 48 different burials. And some, there's apparently a trend now where a lot of people just aren't having a burial. They just do it some other way, or do a family thing a couple of weeks later, or something like that. So there's a lot of different ways that's being done now.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other discussion? I'll make a motion that we recommend and approve and move to City Council Resolution 2259R.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Miller. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay absent, Uwer absent, Serum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Ann Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
Thank you. Up next is item 11, which is ordinance 2229, amending Title VII, Chapter Three of the municipal code related to cemeteries. Alderman Rosado?
Yes, the last time our codes were updated was 2005, and since then, there have been several updates to laws and acts. And this order, ordinance applies those updates to our own codes. Gary?
Thank you, Alderman. This is actually a complete rewrite or rearrangement slash rewrite of Title VII, Chapter Three of the municipal code. Again, Bill Callum spearheaded this entire effort, so if there are questions related to this, Bill can certainly do it. But it is a comprehensive update. I did provide City Council with the red line, which, as you can tell, is a bit of a mess. But if you look back and you look good to the clean version, if you actually read the clean version from beginning to end, it lays out very nicely and makes, you know, clear and consistent sense. So again, if you have questions, maybe start with the clean version, because that's a little easier to interpret. But the red, red line version shows you where we were, where we are, and where we're going. So then I'm going to turn it over in case there's any questions.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just throw a question out. How many years do you think it's going to be before we would ever need to go into the baseball fields at the West Side Cemetery?
That's a very interesting question. I started managing the cemeteries in Batavia in 96. I've worked them since 1988, and we got the Big Oak sections opened up, Big Oak Six opened up, I believe, in up, I believe, in the mid-'90s, mid to late '90s. And at the time, as many burials as we had in Batavia, I thought that I would retire before we would open up anything else. And since then, we have filled Big Oak Six up, and we've lost a lot of options in that section. And that's the section in the very back, next to the baseball field. And we have very few options as far as cremations, or families wanting to buy, you know, a lot for their family, where they can have four to six to eight graves. It's just non-existent there anymore. And now we've opened up Big Oaks Four, which is, if you skip the middle section, which is Five, where all the trees are at right now, and you go to Four, next to Batavia Avenue, we've sold almost 30 graves there already, and we have, we've had just one year of being open in that section.
How many graves in total are there in that section?
I used to have that off the top of my head, but I don't think, again, roll the dice and put my projection out there, and don't hold me to it, but I, I don't think that we will see the baseball diamond possibly within, within the next 10 years for sure, but that there's.
You say it will be there for another 10 years, and then you may?
We'll need it.
No, we will need it, where we'll have to go into that. And it all depends on what our needs are at the time. Do we want to build up the back, or do we want to continue building up the front? But you've got a lot of space still there in that south end. But you're losing space also in East Batavia Cemetery, so it really draws people over to the West Batavia Cemetery.
Where are we losing space on the east side?
Just running out of space.
Yeah, just, you're filling up.
At the front end there, at the south?
The front end is your biggest availability, and you have some in the back, near the shed, but all of your availability is there, is there in the front.
I mean, I just would make the observation that of knowing who's buried, like in that West Side Cemetery. I, I'm sure some of those people went and bought a lot there because it was by that baseball field. Wanted to be near the kids, and they had always been involved in Little League, or baseball, boys' baseball, or whatever have you. I know there's some family sentiment about it by a number of Batavians. Boy, I like it that Dad can hear the crack of the bat when, you know, somebody's playing or whatever have you. So I guess I would hope that we would prioritize our sales in the West Side Cemetery and put them out there in the front end of it there along Batavia Avenue in that section, where right now, we probably do have some people parking cars in there and whatever have you. We've got that one clump of trees there, and Gary, you had talked to me one time about using that maybe to put some columbarium in there. Didn't we think about doing that one time?
We did it one time, yeah, and that's, we ended up at the north end with the columbarium, but yes, we did. And the trees, trees are some of our oldest trees in town, which is why we're trying to preserve those, you know, as long as we can.
I mean, you could put a columbarium in that or next to it, couldn't you, fairly, fairly easily?
Yeah, yeah.
And we actually have some rough drawings of what that would look like, where you have a path going through, trying to save as many trees as you can. And then there's a lot of various columbariums you can add. You can do bench columbariums, you can do the type of columbarium we have now, and then you could do smaller rectangle columbariums. So you can really fill it up, filling a path, and still keeping the naturistic view of the forest in that area.
You know, one thing, I don't want to be remiss in not mentioning it, just everyone keep in mind that the columbarium, at least part of the columbarium, was paid for by a memorial given by a family, a private, private donation. So I think that's always important to keep in mind.
Well, you know, in conversation, I know most of the undertakers in the tri-state for a variety of reasons, but certainly, you know, we only have really one in Batavia for all intent purposes. And in conversation with them, it sounds to me, and this is several I've talked to, that this cremation thing has really taken off. I mean, you know, the idea that you don't have to dig the hole and put the coffin in the grave, and have a concrete holding pit for it, and all this other stuff, that's got to be saving a lot of money, I would think, for some folks, isn't it? If you don't have to put all that in the ground?
Yeah, there's still, there's still a cost, you know, especially when you look at the memorial marker that they're going to install on top of it. Those, those prices are quite expensive, and it's outside of the city's control.
Right, right.
Whereas a columbarium, you have a fixed price for that engraving already, so they'd know what their total cost is going to be, it's more controlled.
Yeah, you know, for the information of those of you on the council, we've got a space at the northeast corner of the West Side Cemetery. It's kind of a, I wrote up a plaque, and we got a monument down there in the middle of it, because in 18, about 1870, we had a cholera epidemic in Batavia. And I don't, we don't know how many people died, but it was a lot. And it appears that when anybody died at that point, I don't know if they thought it was contamination or what, but they just took the bodies down there and just buried them anyplace. And right after I got elected mayor in 81, we had a situation where somebody had bought a grave site down there, and they went down there, and Bosco Hall and his crew went down there and put, put the, you know, the sleeve in the ground to dig out the hole, and up come all these bones out of the ground with it. And so then we're time out on this thing, and then we did some examination. That's when we bought that little marker that sits out there in the middle, and says, this is a, what do you call that? There's a?
Caulper area.
Yeah, a coffin area, and there's, you know, no, but we aren't selling any lots here, because we think there's already too many people buried in here already. And I mean, they're just thrown in the ground, and the bones come out at you. So we've got all kinds of, Billy just indicated, there's all kinds of conversations in the cemetery world, if you wanted to. Of all the things I do as the mayor, this is probably the most unique part of the job. It really is, because you, you get all kinds of sentimentality, you get people are very, going through mourning, and loss, and grieving, and whatever, and then you get all this about where this is, and where who's here, and who isn't here, and, oh, man. So it's, it is what it is. And I, but our team here does an excellent job. I can't say enough for how good our cemeteries are run, and people compliment it. We had a situation a few years ago where we had a young gentleman come out and come down to my office, and he asked if he could come onto the east side cemetery and pitch a tent. And he was a lawyer in Chicago, very successful lawyer. He'd grown up at the Batavia Apartments, when it was first built, and his grandmother used to read books to him every night. And he always said that put him on the straight and narrow, and he became very successful. And Grandma died, and so on, and what was going to be, I guess, her 100th birthday, he wanted to come out and pitch a tent at the cemetery and spend the night with Grandma, just reading all these books that she used to read to him. And he had a generator brought in, and then the whole bit. I think you weren't here yet and missed that. And they put it all up, and he sat there all night, and had his crew come at 5:00 in the morning and take the tent down, and take the generator away, and he went back to Chicago. But it just shows you the kind of things that you get into in the cemetery business. I mean, it's, it's really down to the heart and very personal, what people get into in this thing. And, and our guys do a really great job of, of kind of bending to what everybody's control is, or problem is, or grieving is, because, man, you get it right in the face, and it's, it's right there right now. So thank you for all you guys do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Anybody online? No further discussion, then I'll make a motion to approve a move to City Council, ordinance 22-29, amending Title VII, Chapter III of the municipal code related to cemeteries.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Alderman. Soffa, roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? You're. Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Thank you. Up next is item 12, ordinance 22-30, amending Title VIII, Chapter I of the municipal code pertaining to electrical service for annexed residential properties. Alderman, Serone?
Yes, this ordinance addresses our efforts to annex properties. The state statute, statute is a little too vague regarding comm-ed, and we just wanted to clarify that when an annex resident, if they can stay on their comm-ed service until it fails, or they want to upgrade, but then at that point, they are required to switch over to the city of Batavia's electric power. So Gary, I don't know if you wanted to add to that, or go over the changes, or what, but it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Alderman. It is consistent, what we are proposing, with what we require for the water and sanitary sewer. Again, people can stay on their well, they can stay on their septic field, but if those were to fail at one point in the future, the, the rule is that they have to then connect to city water or sewer. We're just trying to clarify, as Alderman Serone said, a language in the state code that gives an option, and we wanted to make it clear that if they do, if they are annexed properties, and, again, if there is city electric within 200 feet. We're not trying to unduly burden, burdensome property owners. We're simply saying that if it's readily available, that they should be required to connect to it if they, if their service fails, or if they're doing a service upgrade. So that's the purpose of this ordinance. We are recommending ordinance 22-30. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Nick, this is Leah. I have a question. Gary, can you just clarify a little bit, what does failure mean, or an upgrade mean, in a situation like this?
So sometimes if you have a very old home, you may have a 50 amp or 100 amp service. If you need, you want to completely upgrade your service, that would mean, modern services would be like a 200 amp service, or a really large house, it could be up to a 400 amp service. So that would be, that would be an upgrade, where you're basically taking the whole internal panel and you're, and you're redoing it, and you're going to need a new service wire, because the new ser, the new wire, sorry, the new wire is needed to carry the new load. So that's an example of an upgrade. A failure is just that. It's if, as if there's a problem with the panel, or a cable fault, or something where people have to redo their service because it has failed due to being, you know, 40 years old.
Thank you.
Ken?
Just a quick question. Do we have a lot of properties that are over 200 feet from the service? That would exclude them from this?
So that's a yes and a no. Yes, there are a lot of properties that are more than 200 feet, and, and you're right, that would be excluded from this, but at some point in time in the future, when they become within 200 feet, they would be required to hook on when their service, you know, needs work. The electric utility has taken the position that it's not worthwhile for us to extend 1,000 feet of infrastructure to service a residential home. Just dollars and cents wise, it doesn't make sense, because residential customers aren't revenue generating like an industrial customer would be. So this is why, you know, an entire subdivision were to come in, I'm not going to mention street names, but, you know, on West Main Street, there's an entire area there that doesn't have Batavia Power. If all those homes, 20 or 30 of them, were to come together, you know, that's a different story, but for the, for the utility to extend infrastructure just to service one house, it doesn't make economic sense for us, nor would it make economic sense for them. That's why we're not including it as a.
And when you say 200 feet, what is that, like, based on, from where the connection is to where they would connect to the box?
It says 200 feet of their, of their, of their residential property, so 200 feet of their property.
Okay.
All right, if no one else has any questions. Gary, I just want to ask, what prompted this? Just, you came across it, or was there an issue, or any outstanding, or memories that prompted this?
As with all good laws, there's always a story behind it. And yes, we have recently had an instance where a homeowner had inquired about upgrading their service, and in that instance, we literally had a pedestal sitting with an eyesight of their front door, and they insisted that they wanted to stay on comm-ed. So that's, that's kind of was the catalyst behind us, us making this clarification.
But didn't they have a failure?
I'm sorry?
Didn't they have a failure?
They were going to upgrade their service. They were, they were going for a larger, larger service.
Okay.
So that's one of the two criterias, either upgrading their service or failure. Yeah.
And it was a wire upgrade as well. It was an overhead line, it was going to be a wire upgrade as well.
And how did that end? Or is it still in progress?
No, they can, they're connecting to city electric now.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm sorry?
Did they connect from the front or the back?
Scott may know that better than me.
I believe it was the back, but it was going to be run around the front. So the pedestal was at the back part of the property, and it was going to be run around where the existing box was.
Because to move the box would have been a lot more expensive.
Yeah. We're not trying to, I said it earlier, we're not trying to unduly burdensome people. We really aren't. But where it makes sense, we need to have them connect to city electric.
Understood. I know the story now.
Is that, is that all, Jennifer?
Yes. Thank you.
With that, I will make a motion to recommend a City Council, ordinance 22-30, amending Title VIII, Chapter I of the municipal code pertaining to electrical service for annexed residential properties.
Second.
Roll call, please. Who was the second?
Miller.
Miller, roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly, absent. Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Ann Malay, and you're absent. Motion carried 11 to 0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got item 13, which is a public hearing, many time after 7:35, for special service area number 58. And we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for an amendment to special service area number 58, which is the special service area that covers the Tanglewood Development. When we were reviewing some documents, we found that we wanted to make a small correction to the special service area, to add two parcels, to ensure contiguity between the two parts of the special service area. So this amendment is, is including two properties, one of which is a road right-of-way, and another which is part of the NiCor gas pipeline right-of-way. And the amendment would slightly increase the special service area. It is remaining a dormant special service area. We do not have a levy for this, so we would know, they would see no property tax increases because of, of a levy on this special service area amendment.
I have only one question, which I think I had when we originally passed this, or this, for the special service area. Is that supposed to be Main Street, not Fabian Parkway?
I do that again.
Yep.
Yes, Main Street. You're correct.
That's the only thing. I read it, and then I went back and read it again, and I'm like, it's still there.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Make sure it doesn't say Main Street when it comes to us at City Council.
Will do.
Or else I might have to vote against it. Does anybody else have any comments? Anybody online that has any comments during the public hearing? If not, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Miller?
Second.
Second by Rosado. Close the public hearing. You got a roll call, please?
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly, absent.[1712.12] Chancet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay absent, you are absent. Serone?
Aye.
And Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Now we'll move on to Ordinance 22-28, establishing an amendment to Special Service Area Number 58 that we just had the public hearing for. Any comments? If not, I will make a motion that we recommend to Council, Ordinance 22-28, establishing an amendment to Special Service Area Number 58.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay absent, you are absent. Serone?
Aye.
And Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Now we'll move on to Ordinance 22-28, establishing an amendment to Special Service Area Number 58 that we just had the public hearing for. Any comments? If not, I will make a motion that we recommend to Council, Ordinance 22-28, establishing an amendment to Special Service Area Number 58.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay absent, you are absent. Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chancet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay absent, you are absent. Serone?
Aye.
And Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Now we'll move on to Ordinance 22-28, establishing an amendment to Special Service Area Number 58 that we just had the public hearing for. Any comments? If not, I will make a motion that we recommend to Council, Ordinance 22-28, establishing an amendment to Special Service Area Number 58.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay absent, you are absent. Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chancet?
Aye.
And Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Thank you. And then up next is item 15, project status. Laura?
Thank you. I just have some dates that I wanted to share with everyone first. On, at the City Council meeting on June 6th, that will be at 7:30. Prior to the meeting, at 7 o'clock, we'll have an official raising of the city's flag to commemorate Pride Month. And at that City Council meeting, the mayor will be presenting a proclamation naming June as Pride Month in the city of Batavia. The Batavia High School teacher that organized the pride event last month that Alderman Chancet spoke about at a prior meeting will be here to share information about that event, as well as the executive director for a not-for-profit that provides services for LGBTQ plus youth, and both of them will be giving us presentations that night. There will not be a committee of the whole meeting on June 14th. June 14th is Flag Day, but we also, that day, the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization will be having the Flag Day Memorial Official Groundbreaking Ceremony. So we hope that everyone will join us for that event. It will be from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And in addition to the groundbreaking, the community band will also be playing for the crowd that night. Our offices will be closed on June 19th in observance of Juneteenth. That's a holiday that City Council approved last year. Last year, June 19th fell on a Saturday, so we did not have our offices closed, but just wanted to provide advance notices that our offices will be closed in observance of that holiday. Also, the new engine has been delivered to the fire department at this point with all of its equipments, and so we are happily planning what is called a push-in event to commemorate the addition of that apparatus to our fire service. We are planning on it to be on Saturday, June 18th, and more information will be available both on the city's website, social media, and also in our weekly e-news. And just in case anybody's listening to this meeting and they aren't signed up for the weekly e-news, it's a really great way to find out things that are happening in our city, important events that are going to be talked about at the City Council meetings and committee of the whole meetings. There's a link at the top of the weekly e-newsletter to the agendas for the upcoming meetings and one can do that right from the homepage. So if you just go to cityofbatavia.net on the homepage, you can sign up for the city's weekly e-newsletter.
One question, I'm just looking at my calendar. If Saturday is June 18th, are we closed June 19th on Sunday?
June 19th should be a Monday, isn't it? Oh, I'm sorry. It is June 19th, but because the holiday is on the Sunday, we observe it the following day.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was right.
Thank you. Yes, so we will be closed on June 20th. Thank you very much for that clarification. And then I just had one thing that I wanted to speak with you about because we're canceling the meeting on June 14th. There has been a matter that has come up from one of our local craft breweries who is requesting an outdoor adjunct to their liquor license. Currently, under our co, city code, outdoor adjuncts are only allowed for the tavern, restaurant, and bowling alley licenses. And so if there is no objection, I would like to bring the, the ordinance to change the code, to add the Class H craft brewing license to the outdoor adjunct, unless anybody has any objections to that. I just want to make sure that we're making the decision in as timely a process as possible because it's the height of that season for that type of business.
We could always have a meeting on the 14th after Flag Day to inspect the premises.
See how it would work out?
See if it would work out.
Hey, that seems fair. Not necessarily. I was going to say do a dry run, but that was the opposite of a dry run.